Good evening. I'd like to call this January 21st, 2020 Zion City Council Meeting to Order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Here.
Commissioner Holmes?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Mayor McKinney?
Here. Item number three is the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Ritter?
Please do. "Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Item number four, are there any agenda changes from the commissioners? Are we going to pray? Yes, we are. That's the first agenda change. I'm just checking to see if you're on top of it tonight, Commissioner McDowell. We have Pastor Adams going to come up and offer us some prayer this evening.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Pastor.
Let's pray. Father in heaven, we just thank you so much that we can be in this room. I thank you, Lord, for the leaders and the servants that have given so much of their lives, their families, everything, Father God, their minds, their hearts, anxious nights, decisions, hard decisions, wrestling. Father, we thank you for all of it. Lord, we are so blessed to have these people. Lord, I ask for just your guidance tonight and your wisdom in the decisions that lie before them. Father, we pray for this city. Lord, we ask that you would just continue to bless, Lord, where we're hurting. Lord, we need you to help us, Father. God, I just thank you so much for what you are about to do in this place. I thank you, Father, for what you have been doing. Lord, we also want to remember our country, our nation, in the highest places of office tonight, Lord, as we are in perilous times. There's decisions and there's seeming division. And, God, we just pray for unity. We pray for wisdom, we pray for light, and we pray for truth. Father, as my friend here to my right has asked that we would remember the Marines. Father, we do. We lift them up. My dad was a Marine, Lord. I thank you, Father, for our servicemen and women, Lord, that are protecting our nation. We thank you for them, Lord. We pray for their families, we pray for them. We pray for help, Lord. We pray, God, that you would be with the people that serve our country all across this globe, Lord. We thank you for their lives and for what they offer for us, Lord God, and we are safe because of them. Lord, I thank you for our first responders, our fire departments, our police. Lord, we thank you, God, for even, Lord, just city inspectors and things, because we've been in places where these things have not been, and we've seen the travesty without them. And, Lord, we're so blessed, and we thank you. Now, Lord, just guide us this night. We thank you in Jesus's name. Amen. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Pastor Adams. Pastor Adams, you covered a lot of things that I typically, when we have our silent prayer, a moment of silence for our first responders, our military, as we go through the perilous times with what could be happening overseas, for all of our men in our military, men and women, those who have served and continue to serve, our first responders, not only our city, our city employees. But I notice couldn't think of one of the most peaceful places that I've ever been. Hawaii had one of their rare shooting, two officers, police officers, being shot in Hawaii. And it shocked there, it shocked the people in Hawaii. All of the islands came together, and they just haven't had that kind of violence. So we're living in a very volatile time, and we're thankful for the safety that we're provided by our military, our first responders, whether it's fire or our police. And if we just have a quick moment of silence for them, it'd be much appreciated. Thank you very much. Item number four, slight groundhog today. Any agenda changes by the commissioners? No changes. All right. Well, I guess we do have the one change of. Item number five, we have a special presentation from Dan Showman, Inc. Dan and his company have been serving as our lobbyist down in Springfield, and he's going to provide our council as well as our citizens an update on things that we have accomplished, that they've accomplished, and help us to kind of get in the ballpark in terms of expanding our reach down in Springfield. So, Dan?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, commissioners, for having me here today. I'm Dan Showman. I just wanted to give you a quick update on some things that are going on when it comes to government relations activity for the city of Zion. First of all, I'm glad to report today that we found out today that the state treasurer of Illinois is coming to Zion on March 6th at 10:30 a.m., and along with Representative Mason and Senator Bush, he will be announcing his plans to give away money, believe it or not, to the citizens of Zion. The state has a program called ICASH, which is the unclaimed property for the state of Illinois. There are hundreds of unclaimed accounts in the state of Illinois from the residents of Zion, and we will be advertising this program where residents will have an opportunity to come in and find out if they have unclaimed property with the state. And unclaimed property could be anything from a checking account that you never cashed to a check that you never cashed to a condo association assessment that was never cashed. So he will be coming on the 6th, along with the senator and the representative, to announce this effort, and also to, we will have a representative here the whole day to help residents find out what cash is available so they can attempt to find money that their relatives might have left them, their mother, their brother. So we're excited about this opportunity to have the state treasurer in Zion, and the mayor helped facilitate this, because when he met the treasurer, he said he would like to have him come and help us with this program. The second thing I wanted to announce was that the city of Zion is working with the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency on an effort to basically fund water infrastructure improvements in Illinois. The lobbyist team was able to connect the city with the Illinois EPA, and I used to work at the EPA, actually, several years ago, and they have extremely low-interest loans that have actually a potential for forgiving more than half of the loan for water infrastructure improvements. So we've had several fruitful conversations with the EPA, with the city administrator, David Kinnable, who's been doing a great job on this, and we're moving ahead, so we're going to be at the top of the pack when we're ready to apply for some low-interest loans from the state. It's 1.5 percent, I think, is the rate, which is better than my mortgage. The third thing is we're working with Senator Bush and Representative Mason on capital funding. The state has yet to release any funds, but they're going to in the next couple of months. And according to Senator Bush and Representative Mason, there is funding available to release for the city of Zion for infrastructure improvements such as alley repairs and for road repairs. And I think I distributed, or David, I think you distributed something to the commissioners about what we're specifically working on, and we appreciate the efforts of our legislators. The final announcement is that, you know, since we've been signed on, our team, the mayor, has met with more than a dozen state officials, including the governor, to talk about the importance of helping Zion economically, and I appreciate any questions you guys might have. Thank you so much.
Any questions from our commissioners? So the list you gave us, it has capital funding, the ICASH event, EPA, nuclear plant, you just mentioned that, Crane's article, and enterprise zone, and then you got a list of all of the meetings that you set up. So that's the report. Now, were these reports supposed to be given to us on a monthly basis?
I think it's periodic, so, but, you know, we can report as often as you'd like, Commissioner. So if you'd like a monthly report, that's good.
That's what I remember. That's what I recall, is that we were to get reports monthly of activity.
We've been reporting periodically, so we'll do it monthly. Thank you for raising.
To the mayor, really.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
That's what I heard.
No problem. So it sounds like we've only been on for a couple of months, but this would be good to have on a monthly basis. It's no problem.
So the ICASH event is the same thing that I just pulled up on my phone, that a person could just do that and claim property?
Yeah, but it's more than just, you can't just do it online. There's a process. So the treasurer's office will be explaining the process and then also getting people the forms necessary to, and explaining how it's done. For example, if you have a check, you might have to prove your residency from that location where the check was addressed. And there's other steps that they'll be able to walk people through and help them.
You're saying it's not just solely online?
You can't just go online and apply. You can start the...
Find out if you have property.
Yes, you can start the process online. And that's what we're going to talk about, and then there'll be forums distributed, and we hope you can participate.
I'd just like to know from Director Roberts and Administrator Kinnable, the information about the Illinois EPA, is that something that we were working on, or is that something that the...
No, that was actually, we were having one of our update meetings, and we were talking about our infrastructure needs, and you actually, when you were sitting there, you were just like, let's call Gary Bingenheimer and get something set up. And I'm like, who's that? It was the EPA, the guy that was in charge of these loan programs. So we then facilitated a conversation with him to learn about what programs they have. Gary did some research into Zion's demographics and situation, told us we qualify for a lower interest rate, forgivable loan program, all that stuff. So Mr. Showman facilitated the connection and the call with them, which we didn't know where.
Because of our size, we're eligible for over 50 percent loan forgiveness. So essentially, it'd be like if you paid off your car, and then you got half the money back.
Correct. And this was something Commissioner McDowell, when he raised it, we were in this meeting, that we weren't aware of, and it's one of those many things. Of course, this being eight months in for me, it's a learning process of things that are available to our city, something that we haven't had access to before and knew about. So their help in introducing us to these new concepts and new connections will certainly help us as we move forward.
And the mayor is probably going to meet with the EPA in a couple of weeks in Springfield to, so we're at the top of the pile.
Okay. Well, I think this whole process is new, having a lobbyist, and I guess the bottom line is, show me the money. And that hasn't happened yet, so I guess we're just going to extend these, is it month by month that we're doing this?
Well, we've actually, I actually disagree with you on that, Commissioner, respectfully. The money has been approved by our legislators, it just hasn't been released. So they approved our JAPA project and potentially some street scapeing money, we just haven't released it yet, but nobody has gotten a dollar in the state. So Chicago, Springfield, Aurora, nobody's gotten a dollar. But thank you.
Yeah, and also, I think as we go through these projects, just like anything in our city, it took us, we didn't get to the place we are overnight, and we're not going to resolve all the issues that we have overnight. The process, learning what happens politically, as we know, government moves very slowly. There's a lot of things in place that we didn't know about in terms of people moving into positions or out of positions that will help us, so we've been trying to build those relationships now so that when they get into those positions, we will also be able to capitalize on the relationship that we are continuing to build. And I think, I talked about the trip to Springfield, but would you talk a little bit about the people that we met during that time, 15, 20-minute meetings that just don't happen, you just don't walk into the state capitol and say, hey, I'm going to meet with Mark Germer, who was head of one of the appropriations committees. These things have to be organized, and we've never done that before.
Right, so that's a good question. So the appropriations are controlled by the appropriations directors for the Senate and the House? And these are member initiative projects, otherwise referred to in Washington as pork. But it's good, there's good pork and bad pork. This is good pork. And so what happens is these members, the members of the legislature control the projects in their districts, so they were given an allotment of a certain amount of money. And it was somewhere between 1.5 million for the reps, representatives, and maybe about 3 million for the senators, and they partial that out to their communities, not-for-profits, police departments, universities. And so we had to be on the priority list, and Senator Bush sent us an email and confirming, and also in person confirming, that we were going to be receiving funding for the JAPA project and Rep. Mason for street scapeing. So we are, and because we met with the Senate, House Appropriations Director, Mark Germer, and the Senate Appropriations Director, Becky Locker, and the mayor was there, that they said, we're going to make sure and put this on the priority list and speed it up. So thanks for your questions.
I think there's some other things, too. The lunch we had with Senator Dick Durbin
Yes.
in Chicago was really critical to continue our efforts with trying to get compensation for our spent fuel rods. He has a voice in DC, and one of the things that he pledged during that luncheon, that he was going to do all that he could to help us. And that's not a meeting that I could have set up on my own. Dick Durbin probably would have said, well, who is this? So having that lunch and sitting next to the state treasurer at that lunch has allowed us to kind of enter a new territory, and I have to continue as the mayor, I know that's my responsibility, to work those relationships and build those relationships, which I continue to do each and every day and each week. Any other questions?
And I'll do the monthly, that's a good point. I'll provide the reports on a monthly basis, so you have a better idea of what's happening on a day-to-day basis.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Unleadedo. Thanks, Steve. Thank you.
Item number six, citizens' comments. I've got to ask you this. Is there a John Doe and Mary Smith in the House? Oh, these are just fictitious names, I'm sorry. Mary Lou Hildebrandt? They were typed so neat that I had to ask.
I'm a Mary, so there's your Mary. Today, my as a group was privileged to participate in the drill conducted by the police and fire departments at the high school in preparation if something happened. I want to express my gratitude to both chiefs for including our group and letting us be a part of that so we would know what to do when things happen, but also, as a citizen of Zion, I want to say how blessed I feel to have departments that care enough about us to go through this training and set this up and work with all the community, so if we need people to come in, there were people there clear from, I'm not sure how far away, the farthest was, but countryside is not down the road a little bit, and that these people come out and knowing that we'd go help in their town, too, but knowing that they've gone through this, it makes me feel safer in Zion, and I would want to express my thanks and respect for what you guys do, and my respect for the council and how much you care about us.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Good evening. At the December 17th City Council meeting during the tax levy discussion, Commissioner McDowell acknowledged that the city faces a massive deficit, yet still felt that a flat levy was the best option for the citizens. According to Commissioner Fisher, we're at the point of cutting personnel from fire and police department. Cuts to these departments are not the best option, they do not benefit the citizens in any way. These departments are already running lean. Several years ago, I wrote an opinion piece for the local newspaper about the exemption from taxes which religious institutions enjoy. Churches have been exempt from paying taxes since our country was founded. There are arguments, both pro and con, for this exemption. One argument is separation of state, another is that churches give back to the communities in many ways, both tangible and intangible. But the fact remains that churches use city resources. They benefit from street and sewer maintenance, police and fire protection, and the city's economic development. The CCC even benefited from the high school's lack of facilities, e.g., the auditorium, and charged the high school $9,000 for each event held at the CCC. That pushed my taxes up. In my opinion, it's time for the churches in the city to step up and give back by helping financially. Commissioner McDowell, your church sits on the largest non-taxpaying piece of property in the city. As a member of the Zion-Betan Ministerial Association, you and your colleagues are in a position to reach out to other religious organizations in Zion and put together an appropriate voluntary contribution to help defray the city's deficit. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number seven is consent agenda. Item 7A.
Approval of minutes, a regular meeting held on January 7th, 2019, at 7:00 p.m.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Is there discussion?
Should that be 2020?
2020, it is. Thank you.
My apologies.
Hindsight is 2020. Thank you. And so is the year. A motion and a second? Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item 7B.
Consent agenda, bills, voucher 134169 through 134335, drawn on Huntington National Bank NA, total $821,541.10.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Just one discussion, just for the record. I know, David, we had talked about retail strategy, I know we had some conflicting opinions about whether or not we should continue with that, and this doesn't fall solely on the general fund, right? So...
Correct. The total contract is $30,000. A quarter of that is paid out of general fund, economic development, for areas that benefit from retail development that aren't within TIF districts. The other 75 percent of it is split among, well, it's split among TIF, the shared road 173 TIF and TIF 3. Ultimately, if the new 173 quarter of TIF, which we'll be talking about later, is approved, a quarter of that would be reimbursable by that as well, once the increment comes in, as those are our retail quarters.
Commissioner Fryerson, thank you so much for that question, because it did jock my memory. We have retail strategies coming in. Is it this week?
Yes, Thursday.
And that's the meeting, Commissioner McDowell, that I would love for you to attend. It's an 8:00 a.m. meeting, if that doesn't conflict with the schedule that you told me about earlier. I think it's an important conversation for us to continue to have. All right. We had a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number eight, consider passing resolutions as follows. 8A, Community Development Block Grant, also known as CDVG, funds for assistance for sidewalk replacement and installation of handicap ramps per Director Roberts.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. Attached is resolution that the city is required to pass for the submission of an application for 2020 Community Development Block Grant funding. Staff is seeking grant assistance for sidewalk replacement and installation of ADA ramps at various locations throughout the city. If the grant is approved, the grant will provide $80,000 towards an estimated $115,000 sidewalk project. Staff requests and recommends approval of this resolution.
I'll make that motion. Is there a second? Second. Is there discussion?
Are the locations already selected for this project?
We will be putting that together when we do the application itself. Throughout the year, we receive phone calls of concerned areas. We have a list. If they fall within the community low-income areas, that's where this grant is to provide the money for, then they will go on that list.
And can you give any estimates or any idea of how much project of this size would cover?
Typically, when we go and look at a block, it's roughly around $10,000 a block. So you can figure out 10 to 12 blocks worth of sidewalk.
Are there just no comments or questions? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item 8B, proposing approval of establishment of the Illinois Route 173 and Lewis Avenue redevelopment project area through creation of a redevelopment plan and project area for the Illinois Route 173 and Lewis Avenue redevelopment project area and implementation of a tax allocation financing, therefore convening a joint review board and calling a public hearing in connection therewith per Administrator Kinnable.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Increase of a new TIF district, there's a couple of administrative pieces that we have to handle before we can actually go forward with the public hearing and joint review board hearing. So one is the council approval of the dates of those hearings. We'll have another item in 9A that we'll discuss, but we have the redevelopment plan. We engaged King &amp; Ken &amp; Associates to help us create the redevelopment plan, put together the borders based on what we talked about. I provided you a map
Yep.
in summarizing those borders. The redevelopment plan is actually on file with the clerk for review, but the first step in that is actually approving the, having, convening a joint review board and a public hearing. In the resolution you have, the joint review board is slated to be February 10th, 10:00 a.m. here at City Hall, and the public hearing will be March 17th at 5:00 p.m. here at City Hall. And then all of the details of the plan will be presented at both of those meetings.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the resolution for the establishment of the Illinois Route 173 and Lewis Avenue redevelopment project area.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion, questions? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number nine, consider passing ordinance as follows. 9A is authorizing the establishment of interested parties, registries, and adopted rules for such registries for redevelopment project areas in the city of Zion per Administrator Kinnable.
Thank you, Dan, Mayor Commissioners. I may need to refer to our consultant Phil McKenna on this, who is here for any questions, but I believe this is just the establishment of a registry, as it says, a registry of interested parties who would get notification as it relates to the establishment of this TIF. So we're approving creating that registry as part of the TIF Act.
Okay. Is there a motion?
All move to approve.
Is there a second? Second. Is there a discussion or questions?
I'm sorry, there's just one slight typo in the title of the ordinance, line two.
Interested parities, that's a normal thing, right?
All right. Commissioner Holmes? Yeah, his is different.
Have you caught it on a spell check after the package?
We're just saying, who's paying attention? Do we need to change it, or is it in the ordinance in the correct way?
I am comfortable, we'll acknowledge it, and we will make sure, I will work with the clerk, Mr. Chair, Madam Commissioner. And ensure that this is properly done. Obviously, there's no violation of the Open Meetings Act or anything like that. We all know what we're doing. The statute itself is referred to, that section of the TIF Act, or commonly referred to as the TIF Act, is referred to as the Interested Parties Registered, not the Interested Parties Registered. So I don't think we need to...
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Holmes identified a second one on this copy. The word project is misspelled also.
I'm going to take my glasses off.
And again, mine has projects spelled correctly. P-R-O-J-E-C-T, project. And so we will use my copy as the master. To ensure that the recording secretary has my copy as the master, with the understanding that we have interested parties register and project as that is understood in the TIF.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I do have just one general question. What is the definition of an interested party?
Is Phil McKenna?
Mr. McKenna, if you would.
Hi, I'm Phil McKenna, King McKenna Associates. It's anybody who wants information with respect to TIF districts. So this takes this current TIF district you're considering, as well as all the existing TIF districts, and says, anybody who wants information on it just needs to sign, follow the form, and file with the clerk, and then any public piece of information that comes out, so the redevelopment plan, qualification report, maps, whatever, they'll receive a copy of that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. McKenna.
And so is the only mechanism to obtain a copy of the forms through the clerk, or will this be provided online, or how does that work?
We could provide it online.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It'll be available at the clerk or online.
Any more questions, comments, additions? All right. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Item 9B, approving amending the sexual harassment prohibition policy and procedures pursuant to Public Act 101-0221 for the city of Zion per city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On August the 9th, 2019, the Illinois General Assembly enacted Public Act 101-0221, an act concerning employment in governmental affairs. Pursuant to the act, each governmental unit is required to adopt its ordinance or resolution amending its sexual harassment policy to establish a mechanism for reporting an independent review of allegations of sexual harassment made against an elected official of a governmental unit by another elected official of a governmental unit. The purpose of this ordinance that we will discuss is to strike the city's current sexual harassment policy and replace the same with an updated policy, authorizing the mayor it's designate to take all steps necessary to carry out the terms and intent of this ordinance and eradicate any previous steps taken with regard to these goals. In other words, the states, in Springfield, they are requiring us to pass this. The public policy behind this in large part was the laws as they state were deficient in so much, they did not allow for a mechanism for harassment from one elected official against another. And with that, we get a cleanup of the overall sexual harassment policy as these things happen. Mr. Chair, that is the essential type of policy behind it. I know that at least two of the commissioners had questions with regard to this or comments. One, I will just address at the outset. We will ask when the, and I forget, Madam Recording Secretary, was there a motion made, or are we just introducing it at this moment?
Just introducing.
Introducing.
With the motion, we would ask the motion be made with the understanding that at certain times, the reporting also goes to the HR director. And that is, it's not an oversight in there, but some of this is because it deals with elected officials, that that was not addressed in some of these policies. But as it deals with employees, it would go to the HR director, or as the app is more than the HR director. Regarding elected officials, an HR director, with all due respect to an HR director, who does a fine job, has no jurisdiction over the elected officials. And as such, would not be, it would not be germane to allow her in that, with all due respect to the HR director. And that would go to the city attorney as an officer of the city, but owing loyalty to the city rather than any single elected official. With that, the motion would be made with that. I think Commissioner McDowell had a comment or introductory statement that he would like added as a preamble to.
Right. So should I just read this paragraph as a matter of consideration for the council, or should this be a motion that I would make that the council acts on?
We can do either way, as you point out. So one way would be to move it with the understanding that we're going to add the HR director, and then we have the motion on the floor, and then Commissioner McDowell during the discussion period can propose this, and if so desired, we adopt this as a friendly amendment as a recital for that. Or we could do the motion with his language. My thought would be, we do it in the latter rather than the former. So we take the motion with the understanding that HR will be adopted. During the discussion period, Commissioner McDowell reads his language in there as a possible preamble. But I, Mr. Chair, I defer the commissioners how we want it done because it's his insertion, so he yields to how you kind of want it done. My advice is...
Yeah, what you said, that's what...
All right, we're gonna do the latter. So we'll take the motion with the understanding that we add HR where applicable.
So I'll make the motion to approve the new sexual harassment prohibition policy, adding the HR director.
Second. Will we have discussion?
We'll be opening up to the session, Mr. Chair.
All right. All right. So I'd like the council to consider inserting this paragraph. And I'll read the paragraph first and then give it an explanation. So we can, I think the appropriate place to put it is after the second paragraph in our sexual harassment policy. And this is my suggestion. The city of Zion recognizes that there will be people with differences of opinion related to the list of protected characteristics in the state of Illinois. And we recognize that such differences of opinion or expressions of those opinions do not constitute sexual harassment as defined by this policy. So the reason I'd like that inserted is because this policy that we approved last year expands beyond just sexual harassment. It also includes different classes of people. So the list that we have here is an individual sex, sexual identity, orientation, civil union partnerships, and other forms of sexual discrimination or harassment. And then in the next paragraph, it just talks about classes of people that we won't discriminate against and at least, certainly all the protected classes or characteristics in the state of Illinois. I think there's a difference of opinion in some of these classes and characteristics, and I'll just give an example. If we had a city employee that was of the view, of the opinion, that sex is determined by biology rather than choice, if an employee were to voice that opinion, according to what we have here, I think that would constitute sexual harassment. And so that's why I'm suggesting we insert this paragraph, that matters of opinion are not to be considered as sexual harassment. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Okay, yes. I think that the definition, Mr. Commissioner, I just want to have a discourse, an open discourse of this.
Sure.
The definition of sexual harassment is in the second paragraph, I'm sorry, the second section, starting on the first page, continuing throughout the second page, about halfway through. I think that what you're talking about is a discourse, a discourse of opinion is one matter, and I think that in here, they talk about depending on the circumstances, behaviors. And the behaviors that would not be provided and would be prohibited under this is unwanted advances, requests for favors, jokes, innuendos, verbal abuse, commentary about individual society, leering, cat calls, touching, insulting, obscene gestures, display or circulation of suggestive objects or pictures, and other physical, verbal, or visual conduct of allude or sexual nature. I don't think that anything that you mentioned in here touches upon that. So I don't find an objection under this act for your insertion. I think that you're, it's obviously touching something, so I'm going to try to be as articulate as possible. But I think that you're, what they're trying to do is ensure that people are comfortable in their workplace.
Absolutely.
And I think that what your statements are, is you want to ensure that people, and your statement was made in that same heart, in that same vein, that people are always regarded as comfortable in their workplace. So I don't find an objection to it. This is new, we did not see this beforehand. I did ask one of my associates to look at it, she said it would be not objectionable under there, with the understanding, and this council's understanding, if it's up as a friendly amendment, that the intent of this is to ensure at all times that people are not uncomfortable in their workplace, and that they are not, that people are also not policed as to their independent views, provided those views are not in such a nature to make other people uncomfortable in their workplace.
Certainly.
Is that fair, a fair characterization?
I just don't want a city of Zion employee to be accused of sexual harassment for voicing a view on one of these characteristics.
Sure. And again, a lot of this, we do remember, and I think point is well taken, if I may finish, Commissioner, I have thought it, but also, we are at the workplace, and to the extent that we are engaging in off-work activities at the workplace, that's also covered in different sections there in our plan of management.
Sure.
And some of this borders, and it's hard, and it's blurred, especially in 2020, about these issues relative to what's proper work conduct, but I think your statement again is to keep people comfortable in the workplace. And that's correct, sir, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry, Commissioner, I...
No, you're good.
Okay.
You touched on the same point.
Okay. I mean, we work at work, right? I sound a lot like a lawyer tonight, and I apologize for that, but we work at work. And some of this is not working at work, is what we're talking about, and we should stay at work at work, and that's important, much less lawyerly.
So you're saying that that topic should not come up in the workplace?
I am not, I am not, as a governmental official, saying that people can or cannot talk about any issue under the First Amendment of the United States Constitution. However, I'm saying that we need to be careful, and we need to ensure that our workplace decorum meets the standards that the city, from its inception, has always wanted. Is that fair?
So if we have employees on break, and they're discussing an issue related to sexual orientation, and someone overhears that conversation and is offended by it, could they be reported for committing sexual harassment based on this policy?
What you're asking is a hypothetical without any variables that go on there, because the point of a lot of this is, think of it as a cartoon with the bubble inside the cartoon. What you're not giving me is what's inside the bubble of the cartoon, and if what they say in that conversation hurts the person hearing it, it may in fact provide to be harassment, which would cause for sanction under this policy. I can't address your hypothetical, per se, because your hypothetical doesn't go into account to what that person who feels victimized actually heard or was subjected to. And I apologize, again, I don't want to count the number of angels on the head of a pin, but I can't address that hypothetical. What I can tell you is, a statement that's understood would not be, a statement such as yours, that is, with the intent that a, people are, the intent and understanding that people are to be allowed to be comfortable in the workplace would be acceptable under this ordinance.
All right. I'm still, would like to suggest that we make that amendment.
Sure.
So that a person isn't liable for sexual harassment by voicing an opinion.
So I guess my thought on that is, we want the policy that we're putting forward to have teeth and to have people feel comfortable in their work environment. So, under the premise that people are acting at work at work, we don't want to open up another, like an opposing protected class under the same policy, kind of does away with what we're trying to do. If someone makes a statement and someone feels offended by it, they have the right to be able to follow this policy and go and report it, and then the investigation and everything that comes behind that will ensue as it's supposed to. And so just because someone makes a statement, someone files a complaint hypothetically, doesn't mean that they're automatically guilty of sexual harassment at that point. But the policy protects people's right to feel comfortable at work, and this gives them a mechanism and a protocol on how that can be reported to the appropriate party.
I think that the point is, and we've had this discussion before...
We did.
Context matters. Expressing an opinion is not necessarily a precursor to harassment. Is, the context of the comment matters. And trying to cover all bases by saying that all opinions cannot trigger a sense of harassment, I think, in some sense, is an attempt to negate the policy. And so I feel it's a little bit of splitting hairs. I think that, under the procedures, if someone were to say something that offended someone else, and they went and reported it, we would have a process to determine the context and whether it meets a standard. So there are protections built in there for somebody who may state an opinion that someone else may find offensive, but they have, protections are built into this policy already. We're not trying to police someone's mind, and, you know, we often bring up free speech as an issue, but within a workplace, within any context, whether public or private, your free speech can also be limited while you're in the workplace. What you do outside of it, in private or amongst, you know, your friends, that's a separate issue, as long as you're not representing yourself as a city employee. So I don't think the amendment is necessary. I think that everything is covered under the policy as it stands, and that there are protections for anybody who is accused, that there's a process that they can be, that situation is investigated fairly, and that the, you know, the determination is made whether it reaches that threshold of harassment or not, because there's also protection against frivolous accusations. So, you know, I appreciate, you know, your thought that, you know, we don't want to police what's in somebody's mind, and, but it's not so much that, it's how it's perceived by the person who may take offense. And so there's a process here for them to report it, for it to be investigated, and a determination made whether there's actually an actual offense or not.
Commissioner Fisher, I agree with what you said about context and intent. It just, I didn't, I didn't see that in the review process here. It seemed to me that the supervisor, whoever reports the sexual harassment, it would be the supervisor or a superior to that supervisor that conducts the investigation. But the parameters of that investigation, like what you just said, context, intent, isn't really discussed here, only that there will be an investigation, and that's why I felt we needed some protection for people that have differences of opinion on some of these characteristics and classifications of people.
Again, I would point out that the context does matter.
It does matter.
Because someone could state an opinion, you know, you could take any point on the compass and state an opinion that may offend someone else.
Correct.
So I think...
I just don't want, I don't want to have a situation where, when an opinion is expressed in our workplace, that somebody gets offended and says, "I'm going to report you for that."
Again, you know, although there's also context, and there is protection against frivolous accusations.
Yeah.
So that's why there's the steps to investigate.
So you're saying that because there is protection, because we have protection against frivolous accusations, that is the, that covers what I'm getting...
I think it does. I think, from my opinion, I think it does.
As I was going to say, I think the investigation also covers that, because that's where interviews will be conducted, that's where you'll have witnesses, that's where you'll get the additional context to what you're mentioning.
Right.
Through that process.
And, you know, I think we're all, from what I've experienced with city employees, I think we're all professional enough that, you know, that's, that is an extreme possibility that someone would make just...
Yes, I'm not thinking of any situation that we have in the city. We've got great city employees. I don't think we ever had to implement a, you know, to act on an accusation like this that I'm aware of, since I've served here. But this policy is going to go forward for years to come, and I just want to make sure it's a good policy.
Mr. Chair, was there any information you can state? Can I add something?
Mr. Chair, also, any permission to come and say, can I add something?
Absolutely.
The first dependent clause on the second full sentence refers to depending on the circumstance. That obviously is taking the context and go count. Depending on the circumstances is synonym, synonym, excuse me, for looking at what the context is. Now, if you also look at language under the section Investigation, that we called out, and false and frivolous circumstances, we called out. I'd also like to, I believe that that is addressable. Responsive action, I think, subject to legal guidelines, the city will make initial determinations as to whether sexual harassment has occurred based on a review of the facts and circumstances of each situation.
Okay.
That in and of itself is directly synonymous with looking at the circumstances and go count.
Yeah.
What concerns me is the idea that, as was stated, and I don't want to be redundant with this, but, any language cannot serve as a penance here for the expression of an opinion is not harassing. If you say an opinion and it victimizes the person hearing it, it is, it could be harassing. We need to look at this in the context of what is the person who feels victimized hearing and feeling at that point in time, within reason, quote-unquote, depending on the circumstances. Does that help with some enlightenment regarding?
Some. What would also help is, we can revise this policy at any time?
Absolutely.
All right.
In the context of what it's such, we have to remain within the confines of Public Act 101-1, if you guys want to say it, but I have one.
Thanks for the discussion, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I think it's an important matter.
Absolutely, great, great subject matter, great, great discussion. Appreciate everybody's different perspectives on it.
Does it, we have a roll call? So, I didn't actually, I didn't...
So, Mr. Chair, may I?
You may.
Thank you. The language was suggested, that would have been a friendly amendment, so we would need a motion at this point in time to add that. I don't know if a motion was formally made, obviously, to be perfected, as a motion, it would need to be signed. I know it wasn't signed. I do not believe a motion was made. I would refer to the Mad Recording Secretary to see if that motion was...
There was a motion made by Commissioner Fryerson, and a second made by Commissioner Fisher.
And those are the only motions on the floor?
Yes.
Thank you. So there was no motion to insert that language made, and now would be the appropriate time to make such a motion to adopt that as an mandatory, as an amendment to the motion that was audited. Mad Recording Secretary, can the record reflect that now made the motion?
Yes.
All right. So, now...
So I'll make the motion to approve.
We already have a motion.
In a second, so now it's roll call.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item 10, Discussion Authorization and Approval, 10A, Consider Zoning Docket 20-Z-7, Requesting a Special Use Permit to Install a Propane Refill Cylinder on the Side of the Building for Business and Retail Use for the Property Located at 3144 Twenty-first Street, as petitioned by Propane P LLC per Director Iyantin, Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval.
I'd like to address that matter, in fact, that Director Iyantin is unable to be here tonight.
Yes.
This is much less interesting and provocative than what we just talked about, so I'll just read his medal in the, in the record. Mr. Weiss of Propane P LLC originally petitioned for a special use permit for the location of the propane tank filling station to be located in the front of the building and retail sales to the public. Prior to the zoning meeting, staff discussed with Mr. Weiss about relocating the tank to the side of the building and screening from the public, which would already meet the requirements of Zion Municipal Code. He would then only need a special use permit for retail sales to the public. Above-ground propane tanks are regulated by OSHA, State Fire Marshal, local fire marshal, and building department. The State Fire Marshal has already been on-site and approved the location. At the January 2nd, 2020 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, they recommended to approve the special use permit with conditions that the tank be relocated to the side of the building.
So is there a motion? Thank you for filling in for Director Iyantin, Administrator Nabel.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
Yeah, question about on the side of the building, so, it mentioned that there were going to be concrete pillars to protect the tank?
Correct.
Those are not currently in place today, right? So do we need to add that as a condition to the approval?
I think that's listed as part of the application process for the special use, so it's already included in the special use permit, included in the exhibits for the application. I believe it's the, the post four foot from each other, six inches, the drawing that's essentially in there.
Got it, okay.
So that's part of the request on the special use permit.
Okay, all right.
Are there further questions? No? Is that a no?
Yeah.
Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item 10B, Consider Approval of a Contract Between the City of Zion and Christopher Burke Engineering for Engineering Services, and Request Permission to Advertise For Bids for the 2020 Alley/Road Program, per Director Roberts.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Commissioner. Attached is a quote from Christopher Burke Engineering for 2020 Alley and Road Program. Staff is requesting approval to execute this contract with Christopher Burke for engineering services. Funding for this engineering services is from this current fiscal year and will not increase the budget. We had a savings within our road program this year if we'd be able to pay for this One reason we're requesting this to go within this fiscal year is that we could go out a bit early and possibly get some better pricing from contractors. Construction of the project would not be until approved under the funding for next fiscal year. Staff requests and recommends approving the contract for services for Christopher Burke Engineering for a cost of $76,000, and to advertise for bids upon completion of the bid documents and drawings.
I'll make a motion?
Second.
Is there discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item 10C, Consider Approval of the Purchase of a Server Backup Tape Library, per Administrator Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Currently, we back up all of our servers and city data onto a tape system, which went bad a, probably about a month ago. We've been getting, Computer Help Key, our IT firm, actually brought in kind of a portable, set us up with a temporary, to make sure that we, we're still kind of getting current backups as a Band-Aid, until we can get approval for purchase of a replacement. So, what we have before you is a recommendation to move forward with the purchase of tape system for $11,591.45. I also requested that they include a financing agreement in there, a three-year financing agreement. The reason for that is, we looked at alternatives for cloud-based storage and backups. We have some of the pros and cons there, but basically, the cost of a cloud-based solution annually would be the same as the payment financing for, under a three-year term. The plus side of the tape solution is that, after the three-year financing, we own the equipment versus being perpetually in a payment situation with a cloud solution. So, if you think of it as a car purchase versus lease, you're perpetually in a lease payment with a car lease versus owning the asset and basically saving those payments after the fact. So, and then the cons are, the cons of the tape is a geographically separated backup. Basically, the tapes we keep here on-site, I was talking with Commissioner Fisher about this earlier, we're going to try and implement a policy to make sure that those tapes are removed off-site to a secure location that's also protected, so that should something happen to the facility that we have, we have those protected as a redundancy. So, we'll get a rotation going of daily, daily backups off-site to address that con. The other con of it is a higher upfront cost for a cloud solution, but again, doing the financing, I would say that we're trying to equal out that, the con of going through the tape drive. So, I would recommend approval of the tape system and the entry into the financing agreement as presented.
Is there a motion to consider approval of the purchase of a server backup tape library?
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there questions? My only question was, could we, I was wondering if we could get that same interest rate for the finance that we did for the, that we were thinking about for the EPA program?
Unfortunately, they will not go with a one and a half percent rate.
No harm in asking.
How long are we backing up data? Like, do we go back 20 years?
I think we keep it on a weekly basis. Just, it's strictly for restoration purposes or a crypto lock type situation.
Okay.
And then we will rewrite those as everything's clear.
And is there personnel costs for maintaining the tape backup?
No.
Okay, so we don't charge for that?
No, we handle that here in the Process Department, just the changing of the tapes and rotating them. I mean, personnel cost is our...
Right, it's already...
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Clerk, are there questions, Commissioner Fryer?
No.
All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item 10D, Consider Approval of Memorandum of Understanding Between the Zion Professional Firefighters Association, IFF 1999, in the City of Zion, per Administrator Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Last year, we entered into a memorandum of understanding with the local 1999, the fire union, to allow us to go down to six personnel. Our contract certainly currently says seven per shift. They will, we negotiated to go down to six per shift in certain circumstances. The need to go down to sixes has been amplified with the current loss of personnel that we have within the department. So, that old memorandum of understanding expired December 31st. We were operating as-is until we could sit down and negotiate with them. We came to an agreement that we would actually add an additional item saying that if individuals passed on the voluntary overtime to fill the seven, that they may not be forced in, except at the discretion of the chief, to fill that seven. So that obviously allows us potentially some more overtime savings. Currently, they're doing a lot of overtime covering the shifts that are vacant right now. This would give them the opportunity, as long as it's operationally feasible, to have a little bit of a break from that, just to meet the contract. So, we're extending the term until we can address, this is to run through May 31st, 2020. And we're currently addressing some scheduling, some other options to address the personnel issues in the meantime, so I would recommend adoption of the MOU as presented.
I would make that motion to approve the MOU, the IFF 1999.
Is there a second? Second? Any discussion? Thank you. Administrator Nabel covered everything pretty thoroughly. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number 11, Departmental Commentary, UN Resources Director Karen Graves.
Hello. Just want to remind everyone of that positions that we have, we post on our website, and this week, we posted in the week's afternoon, our two current positions, one is administrative secretary position, and the other one is a CSO position. So, if anyone that's interested in that position, please check our website, or we do the information, and I'll fly. Thank you.
Director Iyantin is not here, so Director Roberts.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to take this time, I know there's ways of understanding that we are actually falling into winter, we are experiencing some snow. We've been receiving a lot of phone calls about alleys and other portions. This last snowstorm, I'd just like to point out, this was a 36-hour snowstorm. The temperature was, it was kind of like a roller coaster, it was popping up and lowering down, so we had a lot of rain mixed in with the snow, which causes us a lot of problems. If we throw down too much salt, what that end up doing is called a flash, and it'll flash freeze, and some of that is what happened out there on this last storm. Once it does that, it's very difficult for us to remove. Alleys in general, the policy for the city has always been, we've never salted alleys. Those are the last for us to plow also. Our main objective on a long storm like this is to get our primaries open, and that's what we did. So Friday, we deployed everybody around nine o'clock at night. They worked until one, then went home, went to sleep, and then they came back in at seven o'clock in the morning, and they didn't leave till eight o'clock the following night. So it's a lot of time and a lot of trucks. The other thing I'd like to talk about is drivers. We're experiencing a lot of drivers that are trying to pass our trucks on the avenues. It's a little kind of crazy, but they're cutting our trucks off, and then parking. We all knew the storm was coming, so please remove the vehicles off the streets, because it makes it very difficult for us to plow. And then I had one other item, I believe, Mayor, you received the check?
Yes.
From the city for us?
Absolutely.
I asked for a resolution earlier for the CBD and G for a sidewalk program, I think we're going to increase that total project by 15,000.
Yes, $15,168, to be precise. And this was granted to us by the Lake County Board, can't fit this into my pocket, can't take it out of here. But I worked as a commissioner in the Housing and Community Development Commission, and worked with a lot of other elected officials around the county, and this was awarded to us for our sidewalk, our program, we go to our sidewalk programs. Diane Hewitt and Mark Paxton worked hard, as they have, year in and year out, to be able to get us additional money to be able to apply to our sidewalk programs and helping us out. So this has been, actually, on my wall in the office, couldn't deposit it in the bank, but to our Public Works Department, the, our county board, they're thinking of City of Zion and working with us, and it's nice to have a seat at the table to be able to have say on what's happening here in the northeastern portion of Illinois.
I just want to provide a brief update, some of you may have seen it on Facebook, but we're still behind the scenes pushing on nuclear, nuclear waste legislation at federal level. Representative Snyder did have issued a press release for the introduction of the bill into the House, into committee, a stranded bill that we've been working on to try and get the community compensation for being a nuclear waste storage site. That was introduced with Representatives Loewy and Capter out of New York and Ohio. We currently have eight co-sponsors on that bill. Senator Duckworth is working on a similar bill in the Senate side as well, so progress is being made. We have the support of the chairs of the committees that that was introduced to as well, so we're hoping that very shortly, I'll be able to have an update saying that it went to the floor and was voted on and approved to move over to the Senate. I might be a little optimistic in the short term, but we're still pushing on that. So it's HR 5608, House Resolution 5608, if you want to actually see, you can track it on congress.gov. It shows the actions and who the co-sponsors are and where it's going at any point in time, so feel free to track the progress of that as we keep pushing along.
Yeah, that's been really important work, and Congressman Snyder talked to us last week, called us last weekend, talked about the progress that's being made, so they're updating us on a regular basis. I also wanted to reflect back to something in Commentary at Public Works. Some of our citizens should understand that we do plow alleys and secondary streets. There are some cities and surrounding areas that don't plow secondary streets, nor that they plow the alley. Their residents have to plow and salt their alleys, so I know we get a lot of discussions... So I know we get a lot of discussion at this time of the year about snow removal, and again, not always talking about being short-staffed, but our crews do try to, they do schedule according to what's being broadcast or projected on the Weather Channel, and try to get out and remove the snow as quickly as we can. And I looked at this snowfall, and it brought my memory back to 1967 when we had about eight or nine inches of snow, and right after the snow, it rained, and the streets were totally ice, and there was nothing that salt was going to do because of the temperatures to melt the snow. So we're going through that period right now, even though there's some pavement coming right now, we see the pavement right now, but we still have to be very cautious, and I know Director Roberts said they're going to be out salting, so as the temperature warms up in preparation for this next storm, hopefully we'll have better passage and getting rid of some of those ice blocks that are blocking the sidewalks and the side of our streets. Chief Lewis?
Thank you. As Mary Lou alluded to earlier today, and many of you may have seen on Facebook if you were driving down 21st Street, we did have a large-scale drill at the high school this morning, it was an active threat drill. We had responding fire and police agencies from all over Lake County and southern Wisconsin, and we held a drill very similar to this back in 2002, just after the column by an incident. A lot has happened in our world since Columbine, and things have changed, so we've got to keep up with the times. And I will just say, from being there and being an observer from what I did, the response was phenomenal from the police side to the fireside, and we see things on TV all the time, what's right, what's wrong, but if this were to occur in Zion, I would be very comfortable that we were going to handle this quickly and efficiently, and many lives would probably be saved. So I think that's worth a plus for everything that you might hear or see about what's going on in town. We are very well protected in town. And I'm sure Chief Henderson here will give his two cents. And I do want to thank Asda too, they get thanked every time they come out, but you can't say it enough. They should be thanked, the PD should be thanked, the schools should be thanked, everybody that was out there today. The sights, the sounds that were occurring were real life. I mean, these are things people aren't used to hearing, and everybody did a phenomenal job with that, so.
Thank you, Chief, and we all, I know we all hope and pray that we don't have an incident like that in our city. Chief Henderson?
I would just add to that and give you all a little background on this. This drill was initiated at the request of Zion District 126. They wanted, we annually test our response to an active threat there, working with their security staff, most parapros out there, but what they wanted to do, that's required by state law, what they wanted to do is they wanted to take an incident further, a deeper duration, longer duration. So today was an in-service day where they had their entire staff, from custodians to superintendents onsite. No students were involved except those that were recruited as a part of the drama program to be victims, student participants in this, and they really wanted to, their personnel were asking to really be tested on their processes and their procedures. They wanted to evaluate their external security, internal security, lockdowns, shelter in place, and it is the big piece that's often overlooked when you hear in the media is what after the incident? And the big part of that iceberg is below the surface, and that's how do you get parents back with kids after something like this? Where does that take place? Does the school, the hospital, the church, the workplace is now a crime scene? So we spent a lot of time working with that, and this planning for this event was well over a year involved. I want to give a shout out to Deputy Chief Ed Noem from the Winter Park Police Department. He is a state and national expert in this, and he designed this scenario. He has a whole bunch of people that he does this around the state with. He's on one of the governor's commissions that address this thing, so we're very fortunate to have that level of expertise brought in. In addition to what the school wanted to do, there is a component called a rescue task force that has been part of the development and the advancement that's happened since Columbine. What they realized back then, the model that both police and fire were using back then was out of date, and we couldn't afford to secure a scene, make it totally safe, and then bring victims out to fire. So now what happens is the police department goes in and tries to deal with a lethal threat, create what's called a warm zone, and we bring paramedics and EMTs into that warm zone to provide critical life-saving medical care to them before they're even, so they can be treated and transported. And so that involves us working together closely in that capacity, because normally that's a departure. Normally, fire stages until police can completely secure a scene. And so I'm just happy to say, I think Chief Lewis said we have 13 area fire departments, eight area police departments, some on different radio frequencies, different personnel, all pushed together to work together today to accomplish that. And the other thing we really sought to do is to push our, both our capacity and our competency at managing a critical incident like this. So the police department were pretty good and experienced at managing incidents that go shift length, but the ones that really attack some organization, those ones that go like multiple operational periods, and something like this would. So we worked a lot ahead of time to pre-plan that, we're going to springboard that for other types of situations, but what we were able to set up was called Unified Command, where we had Superintendent of District 126, Chief Lewis, myself there, planning for other operational periods and other things that people on the scene could not yet do. And I think it was a good exercise, and I think we came out better equipped to deal with any incident that we may encounter, and certainly these type of incidents, so appreciate everyone's support with that. And I would like to, again, echo our thanks to ESDA and let you know you're a part of that contingency as well, because you would continue to be used further out in an incident like this.
Should think too, Commissioner McDowell, Commissioner Fryerson, we're both there as well as City Administrator Navalton. Just a witness, and Commissioner McDowell actually participated as chaplain.
Thank you very much. Commissioners? Commissioners, any commentary? I just have a couple of quick updates, I know it's getting late, but I've talked about the land bank agreement that we've been involved with for over a year now, a little, maybe a little over a year. Commissioner Fryerson, when I was first standing on City Council, we were working with, trying to get involved with the land bank. We have a meeting on February 3rd that's coming up, and the news there, a couple of good items that are going to be on the agendas, that we found out that the county confirmed that this CDBG grant that we received of $50,000 can be used for insurance and legal costs, and that provides resources for the acquisition and holding of properties. That was an issue as we were getting this started, the land bank started, a lot of technical issues with insurance surrounding the properties, and now this grant allows us to do that. We've also been working with several different entities to be able to, nonprofit entities that are interested in partnering with the land bank to be able to revitalize our properties in our community. Already, because of my involvement on this commission, on the land bank commission, we've already given, I think, the land bank and the county several properties that we have in town that are in desperate need of being repaired, or some that are abandoned, or in back taxes situation, and before that meeting, I will work with our building department and our economic development director to identify other properties that we take back to the land bank in order to make sure that we continue to clean up our city, start moving some of the vacant properties that have been abandoned, and we have a difficult time finding owners, the land bank will allow us to do that. The other item that I want to talk about is the Housing and Community Development Commission that I've been serving on. Get my notes here and read a little bit here. Updated their Lake County Fair Housing Policy Statement on December 10th, 2019, and it states, "The policy of Lake County is to promote fair housing opportunities and encourage racial and economic integration in its programs and housing development activities. Lake County is committed to equal housing opportunities for all persons regardless of race, color, sex, age, religion, disability, national origin, ancestry, etc." And two of the initiatives that they're working on, that we're working on in this commission is to, "We understand that the cost of both purchasing and renting houses in Lake County is relatively unaffordable for racial and ethnic minorities. Also, housing designated for moderate and low-income families is concentrated in certain communities, not spread throughout the county." So over the next five years, one of the things that they're really looking at as we're looking at being able to get more affordable housing in this area. We've been talking with some developers in the city about several sites here that we'd be able to have mixed-use housing and possibly retail there. We continue with those efforts on a weekly basis. Part of the strategy when we start thinking about the commission for the Community and Housing Development Commission is to reduce housing cost burden for minorities and increase income. And some of the strategies to decrease the housing cost, I'll read, is they want to maximize affordable housing by CDBG home grants for high-quality affordable rentals, CDBG grants for owner-occupied rehab, and preserves for existing affordable housing, and home grants for down payment assistance. The last and final one is CBDG home grants for acquisition, rehab, resale to low-income buyers. And this includes people that, a family of four, that have an income of $72,000 or less. And a couple of years ago, we did have a program where we had grants that we were helping, it was Affordable Housing Corporation, that we had grants out for people to be able to apply for and prove their homes. We're still working on those kind of efforts to get grants here to help people fix up their homes in the area. So stay tuned with that, again, being on this commission and being able to have a voice in what happens here in northeastern portion of the county is crucial. Not only am I commissioner, but last week I was also appointed to the executive board of this commission, and so that will help us quite a bit as well to be able to, as we know, we have a large portion of housing choice vouchers here in the Lake County area in Zion, Illinois, and they're looking to distribute that to other communities. So that's my update on that, and now item number 12 is announcements on February 4th, 7:00 PM Zion City Council Meeting, February 18th, 6:15, we have Zion Township Board Meeting, and February 18th at 7:00 Zion City Council Meeting. Thank you for coming tonight, and drive home safely. Make a motion to adjourn? Is there a motion? All in favor?
Aye.